Glad to lead you through the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and with no bounds.
How's the agenda look tonight, Kristen?
So, the agenda looks good. There was an addition, which was requesting the status that you got that email on, 541. And so that's just for one addition. And other than that, we're good.
We're good to go. Excellent. Everybody knows everybody. Minutes. How's everybody think about the minutes?
There's one other quick thing. I had forgotten to put anything about... There was an email that came in, somebody that watched PEG TV and read through the minutes. And I had not put in any mention of the anonymous letter that we had received the last meeting, and the town clerk's memo about 541 Briar Hill.
Uh, no.
So I added a bullet in, so it's number seven, section E.
Okay.
The what could be the final minute, which says... The second bullet, I would add that Ms. Powers read aloud, "An anonymous letter submitted to the board regarding 541 Briar Hill Road."
Okay.
That would be my proposed. There weren't any discussions or actions taken on it, so.
You... I wasn't there, so I read them over, so.
I forgot all about it.
I don't know if it's necessary to add it. I just... There was an email that came through that...
That's fine. And just probably this as well. It was part of the meeting, so.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's my only...
Okay. Did you have anything else, John, that you saw?
I'm fine.
Does somebody want to make a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make the motion to accept the minutes.
Five more seconds. It's gonna be good. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Carried. Thank you. Pre-requested?
I have none.
None. Announcements?
I have none. One, just small ones out of my office, is that I was able to meet with Alan May today regarding Better Roads Grant. We had tried to meet last week and it didn't work. And after a little time, we were able to meet today. And so, the good news is that our proposed project, which is for the South Bend to parent for growth, to kind of complete all that work on the road. He said that he thought it looked really good, what Keith and I have been working on to propose. And he did present a little bit more work to me, and that he thinks I need to separate what we're doing into two separate applications. So I have to do that, but the good news is that the deadline has been postponed, for another two weeks, even though there was some water damages up north that people follow all that, wanted to reassess what they would do for their proposed grant projects.
So it looks like that should be not a problem. It's gonna have to be two different projects, so.
Yeah.
The same area of road would just classify as two different projects.
Yeah, basically culverts, like repairing and adding culverts down the stretch of the road would be one. And then, there's the idea to do some sort of a retaining law and get work, which is the stabilization part of it. So he said that it all is really great, and that he supported what we were proposing, so.
Good. Thank you.
Good to hear.
Anything else?
No other announcements that I heard.
Zoning administrator. Did Jonas send you a little...
Yeah.
He talked to me. He called me today. And said there wasn't much going on, but he would send you a little...
He did. So, quickly got from him, he issued two new permits, or... He said, "Two new permits, period." I don't know if they're issuing or they just came in. Two DRB meetings for November 5th. Meeting minutes were done by Jonathan Weiss. I only made the young hearing. I will prepare the DRB decision for the young hearing on Wednesday. The new computer is in, and Sue Port left a message for Mr. Free to set up the new computer. I loc... It was coming from Jonas. I located Howard's computer. It is in a closet in New Hampshire.
Uh-huh.
And he contacted a relative to try to gather that. Working on two projects for the town of Castleton tonight, and will be in Polat tomorrow by noon, following appointment in that way.
Perfect.
What's going on?
Thank you. Planning Commission report. Do we have anything?
I have not heard anything. One thing, so following the last meeting, just based on what Jonas had said about his interim, and kind of upsetting the interim part of his role, I reached back up to Harry to see if we could get an updated job description for a permanent, more permanent zoning administrator. And that with Jonas's recommendation, I talked to Deb, and we could certainly expand the reach of where we're advertising. So, I reached out to Harry about that today, and we'll be...
I think, I think he's made it clear that he's willing to do it until we can find a suitable candidate.
Yeah, yeah. I think he doesn't want us to rush.
He doesn't want us to quit looking.
Well, that's what I noticed after the last meeting. So I think we could definitely put out, you know, do another round of advertising for the role.
Great. Frank?
The Planning Commission, Harry's here about one of the interesting things, that anybody else might know of, is the number of members of the commission were interested in having more DRB review of old uses, which are conditional uses. And so, in agricultural, residential agriculture, with the recommendation of the board members, who pretty much agreed on it, that there's people who are to pull hunt. I mean, a large number of the committees in that district can make it conditionally. So you could actually have a body of people reviewing something and say, "You know, this wouldn't be bad. We've changed the character of the neighborhood, blah, blah, blah." Set up a more flexible criteria based on, you know, moving objects as opposed to a cold definition saying, "No, something could be done in some of those cases, which would be acceptable potentially in that area." So that's something that's gonna be, I will be a big change going forward. May alleviate the select board from having to step in with expensive lawyers and stuff all around the weather definition, ultimately, which would create problems.
Thank you for that, Frank.
Because the DRB is a court, the five court. So the zoning administrator wouldn't necessarily have to care much, because it would automatically be going to the DRB. So that would put that, that would clear that whole problem. Probably streamline it ultimately by starting at the DRB, as opposed to jumping through hoops in the other direction.
Thank you.
But it would require a lot more time, a lot more DRB hearings, so.
It would require a bit more, but actually callous, 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 or calais, whatever.
Calais.
They do a similar type thing. And there's, but there's clear cut allowed use still existing here. But there's some stuff that could be, should go to maybe a hearing in a society of logical thinkers who are self-headed DRB members. And it probably wouldn't take that long to do it. But you're moving the zoning administrator from that whole process. So that whole time is a cash saving. This zoning administrator would spend time on it, and DRB would follow. Your voice would save him the time.
Okay, thank you. Bo Forman, did Keith have anything?
I ran into him. He just stopped quickly this morning. He was out flying. So we, just the plan, I think, for us is that we're gonna get together. He was going to be gathering pictures and bringing some anticipated budget numbers. So we'll continue to work. But other than that, I didn't have any good chance to know. And I assume they've been busy.
So the grader, we found that, the grader that came over evaluated, and the leak was from the starter. Because the starter has to be sealed, and it goes into the transmission. And there was a discussion of whether we could change the starter or not. But Keith said that a year ago, that's where this trouble started. It was leaking in the same area. So him and I discussed it, and we felt that it made sense for John Deere to change the starter, so that we haven't touched anything on this. And we'll see what happens from there, so. That's where we're at with that. I assume that they were coming to correct it. He said the leak is very small and minor. They had to use it a couple of times, which was, you know, no big deal.
They can do it here.
Yeah, John Deere will come to a road service call and change it here. So he was gonna get back in touch with him. Because the guy, the guy from Nortrak called me, just as Keith called me, so. He covered everything, while it was quite fresh. So he seemed to be in the right direction. I'm sure it'll be a thousand dollars by the time they come here and put the starter on, but that's like today. You know, I mean, I'm sure they're 130, 140 bucks an hour for a service call, something like that. Yeah. Um, what, anything else can you think of, or? I guess, I don't know if they started hauling any sand to Polat. Do you know, John?
I don't know.
I've been back by that town barn, and I didn't pay attention then what's called, if they hauled any stone.
I don't think so. I think they're just using what is current, was already currently in the pile.
Right. Any report from the assessors?
Not one that I've seen.
Okay.
I did talk to Karen in passing while I was here yesterday. And they're still working on the maps and the cartia.
Bringing everything?
And everything up to date.
Super. Everything's going all right?
From what I hear, I did ask Sue whether, one of our concerns of changing to a assessor and an assistant was whether there was adequate coverage at time for citizens, landowners to come in. And she thinks it's working okay.
Yeah, it doesn't, they haven't heard much.
Many of the items are not urgent, so they can't change or make an appointment or when someone is here. So I think that's working out okay, from, at least from what I'm hearing. Whether there could be a disgruntled person out there or not. But I think our concern of going away from resident to outside and taking care of what the schedule they've got so far.
That's good. That's good. Town clerk's memo. I will be at the New England Association of City and Town Clerks' Annual Conference for the remainder of the week. Sue will be in the office. The office will be closed Wednesday and Thursday for Thanksgiving, and it's Friday. Concerned citizens from sev... Concerns from several citizens regarding the condition of the flags on the poles in both Polat and West Polat. My recommendation is to replace them or have them all taken down. At some point, I seem to recall, the fire departments were going to assume the role of getting them up and down. And I believe that that is probably correct.
I know it is. I recall them putting them up on them.
It seemed, it seemed like they were, that they were gonna assume the maintenance responsibility of the flags. Could you reach out to the two?
I can reach out to John.
John, and David, and see if, I think that West Polat House Chief has a address. Just see... I would say, probably being winter, it would be just as well if they were all taken down, and maybe we put a fresh round out in the spring, or something like that.
What's on David at the West Polat, what's the chief's last name?
Ricardo. Sorry, Mr. Constable.
Believe me, I know that.
It's the same person. He not only has the same name, but he...
Two guys with the same name?
Okay, we're gearing up for annual town meeting and presidential primary. If you're planning to run your term, for your expiring terms, it's time to generate your petitions. You up this year? I don't remember. I think you are. How was that last year? Chuck was up. Yeah, I'm pretty sure you're up, probably.
Eddie and I are one year.
They went out there one year somewhere. I think Bob, because Chuck was in the year before, right? He's on his second year, so. Have a good evening. Okay, that's cool. Treasurers' report. Four warrants to be signed. Does anybody have two?
Oh, sorry, I'm missing... No management.
I... I'll send you. Yeah, I'll skip down here. Regarding landfill, a reminder that you're going to contact someone at State regarding this. The fund balance of today is $49,003.81. So, I tried.
You did, yeah.
And it kicked back. So, and then I didn't ever try harder. So, I will, maybe between the two of us, if we can look and see... Maybe we can just find that position? Didn't it say something about it?
I'll look into it.
On that email? It's, James Cirillo was the guy. So what I'm guessing is he's probably retired, because it's been four or five years or something. Or they did a whole little deal, and it's a different da, 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 or something. Is there some way you can?
Oh, I can do it. I need to know right now.
All right. Thank you. I'm just, I guess I'm thinking out loud, is to maybe by looking at the title that he had on that landfill, on that email, if we could go to that agency or something, and go from there. Otherwise, in Green Mountain Engineering Services, was, they were the ones that were doing the testing and stuff like that. They're also the ones that did the sewer.
Just one quick little thing. I did just get an email from Harry with a report.
Okay, sure.
We wanna look at that at any point. I just want to know.
So, I guess we probably should finish this.
Yeah.
This one, and then, and then we'll jump, jump to Harry.
Okay.
Okay. Thirty-three checks, eleven payroll, twenty-two accounts payable. I heard from the FEMA grant collection person. She received my updated documents and is ready to process payment on one of the grants I'm working with. Heard to consign. The other ones still have submitted an amended sheet. And have submitted an amended sheet. We'll keep you posted on status as I hear from her. Audit is complete. Judy will come over later this week and walk me through my first audit. Thank you, John. Walk me through my first audit, and I will present paperwork for you to sign at the next meeting. Please call her email with any requests for next week's budget meeting. Unfortunately, I have a conflict on next week's budget meeting. So, you guys can handle it all, or we could see about changing it. It's already, it's already in the works, right?
Well, I just emailed the warrant. The warning has not gone out yet. I emailed it.
How long, how long does it have to be warned for?
Twenty-four hours, all right. For especially.
Unfortunately, next Tuesday's not gonna work for me. So, I mean...
We did come up.
A lot of numbers changing and stuff like that. We don't finalize it, we just get it in line, so. Whatever you guys think.
I think it's important to be there.
What's that?
I think it's important we schedule something where you can be there.
Are you available to Skype it, or something like that?
No, I have all these things going on that I can't, I can't change, so. I don't know.
Over to Wednesday, or?
Well, that's Thanksgiving week, so that.
Yep, that's true.
That's...
Over to Monday?
I could do it. Yeah, I don't know how to talk with Chuck. And, uh, and Edgar, and see what.
What would work.
Would, I don't know how Mondays or anything works for those guys. But maybe we could do Monday before the regular meeting, or that?
Monday, the second?
Yeah, before, that, could that regular meeting is, would be Tuesday. Does Monday work for you, or?
Yeah. Well, it'd be truly too.
Yeah.
Could you test, test the water and see?
I can do, reach out to everybody in the past, and everybody reach out directly back to me. Because we can all mail together.
Right.
Fun if that would be. A email change, all of that. I will reach out, I'll put a message out and ask if people would prefer Monday, if people would be okay with Monday the second.
Available, available for Monday the second. That way it could be...
Because there's no possibility of coming, everyone coming early to a select board meeting, right? You can't.
No.
You wanna make that a motion, if you're conditional on not everybody agreeing that you can say, right now, that changes it?
Because it's just a special...
It's just a special meeting. It takes 24-hour warning. If everybody's happy with it, we can just warn it and go. That would be good.
I will.
Okay, thank you, thank you everyone for working, working around. Okay, so we just gotta... Yeah, I, I was scrolling through emails, and I sent you that one. And I meant to put something on it.
The surrender, the land?
Yeah, I forwarded it, and I was gonna write you a little story, and then all of a sudden, probably the whistleblower, so. It's a quick sentence.
And I was like, I got it, and I wrote you back, and I was like, okay.
So what?
Thank you.
At least, at least I found the contact, and that. If it was more information, it must be somewhere hiding in something I got from Green Mountain Engineering, maybe. I was gonna try and do some searches on that.
We will, I will look into it tomorrow. See what I can find.
Great, thank you. And if, if you think of it, if you're not finding anything, shoot me an email maybe in the morning or something. Just, just ask me to, to look around in some of my Green Mountain Engineering stuff.
Okay.
Because I know that they sent us, the last time we asked, one of the two of them sent out an answer. Either Green Mountain said what he said, or that because of one of the results from one of the wells, they wanted to continue the testing for an additional time.
And so we are ultimately looking to determine who we've been contacting, to see what the status of the whole thing is?
Yeah. But it's, it's pretty much the state, I believe. But then, we may need to go back to Green Mountain Engineering and have another round of tests on, on the wells and stuff.
Okay. Are you all on the warrant?
Check it out right now. There's a lot going on right now. It's one of the lines that we're gonna have to... Let's check. We're gonna compare the data to 11 hours, 24 hours. And the whole that span?
Correct. And now, we're on our spot.
All right, do we have a motion for the warrants?
I'll make a motion.
Well, second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. So we're good with the treasurer's report, then, huh? Would you like to read Harry's, please?
Note, the November meeting of the Polat Zoning Commission will be held on November 26th, the usual fourth Monday of the month. Item one, Community Values Mapping Project. A summary presentation of the Community Values Mapping Project was made by Monica Presperhart of the Vermont Fish and Wildlife Department on Thursday, November 14th. Monica will submit an electronic copy of the presentation, which will be uploaded to the town website. Item two, opening new positions. Kristen Powers has contacted me regarding updates to the job description for the position of zoning administrator. Updates have been emailed to her, as well as to that, that Hopkins. And Tammy Ross, head of her position as Secretary for the N Commission as of the October 28th meeting. End of report.
I thought they were holding the planning committee, I don't know.
That's been December.
Right, for Christmas.
December, yeah.
I want to sign some...
Yeah. Okay, so we're all good with that. Emergency management?
We discussed it with last meeting.
Right. And health officer, wastewater. Let's see, right now, she's working with the state about doing some plumbing changes to make one, one of the, one of the septic tanks, the sludge tank. Because what did, the way it's set up now is, is everything that comes off the clarifiers gets pumped back into the headwaters and goes back through. So it's compounding some of the process, especially with the polymer, making the, making the RBCs not work correctly. So she's working with Shay Miller to get a, a plan approved by the state to do some piping changes. And she's gonna have to get a contractor, and we're gonna have to drill a hole through the wall, to put another pipe through at a different height, and do some piping. The actual material isn't very much. It's only a few hundred bucks worth of pipe and stuff. But I'm sure it'll take some time for, to get somebody to bore a hole through the concrete and change the pipe around and stuff. If she can get approval, I think we should try it, because this is, there's been a huge battle to get it running this good, and if they can make it run a lot better, it can only benefit us. And I think that's about it. I think that's all we got going right now. We have some, a few other things we got to get some prices on. But I think she's, she's focused on the, on the stuff. And I think in the, in the letter she sent you last, once she talked about some repairs to pump, and some stuff like that that we're gonna have to do. But we're gonna focus on this, just get changing this sledge around first, and then, and then go to the, the pump repair in the Spruce Gun Pump Station. Needs the, what they call the rails that the pump goes up and down on, needs to be replaced and stuff, so that'll be a little bit of expense. Older unfinished business.
So we, I just put personal policy amendments on there, because we have to adopt those at some point. I think within, it would probably be nice to do it when everybody's here.
I think it would be better with the board.
But it's just something that we should do by, probably by the next. It should, has to be done in December, so that we can adopt it.
So we, um... So we, um, do you have, do you have them all, that printed out so that we can see them and?
I'll bring those to the next meeting. Because yes, I do, but I think I'll send them to the next meeting so that you can all see them. I can email them out.
Please, yeah, please, that's, that's by far.
And it's just going to be, um, vacation.
Clarification of the vacation, right, yeah.
So.
Right.
Um, that, yeah, that school choice proclamation.
Proclamation, I know. I, I think we could wait on that for, I mean, that, I, I don't, I didn't get any feedback on that at all. Do you know anything about that, that?
Oh, I'm concerned about it. I think it's a, it's a national program, but, uh, I think a lot of the bend is to try to use public money for private schools. And, uh, I think we have a unique situation. The voters obviously voted the way they did on the merger.
Yeah.
Somewhat changed that. Um, but, uh, I don't think it's anything that we need to do as a.
I appreciate that, but that's kind of my feeling on that, how just, it looks like some nationwide kind of thing. It's.
Right.
Yeah.
That's my impression. I'm not completely sure.
I wasn't completely sure either, but I didn't really see how it affected us and how it would have any kind of positive.
I mean, we've already, we've made our choices in how we're now paying for,
Right.
a higher amount for the private school.
Right.
And, uh, so I think that's, that's what it should say.
Yeah, just leave it alone. Bob, what is your? I'm, I'm finding that too. Frank?
I'm having one time saying that there was a little problem with the designation school issue with something sent. There was some politicking going out where somebody didn't want to do something unless they got something. And so this week, the way I read it, in discussions elaborated a number of months ago, with a school representation here, was that this may jeopardize their ability to go to grand though. So this is something that needs.
This proclamation is, is not really anything at a state level here. You can, you can look it over. It was probably part of last, last minutes.
There was some, something enabling at the state level that had to be done.
Yeah, but I think this, this school choice proclamation is, is not to do with anything at the state level. This is a, a proclamation from some.
It's a, it's from something called School Choice Week. It's an organization called schoolchoiceweek.com.
Not from the state of Vermont, so.
It's not from the state. It's just, it's an organization. We'll get that right now. And the way that the email came through, you don't need to do a mail merge. You can just plug in your details and auto pop you like something into the same message that goes up demerically. It kind of seems like it was just targeted.
By the form letters and all.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So I think that we'll pass on that and the consensus of the board seems adequate. Don't you, John?
Yes.
So we'll just pass on that. So that, that ship has sailed.
Oh, perfect.
Older unfinished business. Would you please read that update for Merrill?
So there is a request to have an update on what was going on with the court proceedings. Regarding five four one Briar Hill and so Merrill Dunn, the town's attorney. Where is the email with the latest? And this is where her email begins. Hi Mike, no problems here at the latest. There is an environmental court proceeding pending, which is intended to address both, one, enforcement of the notice of violation held Wilkins issued concerning the structures and use related to the school. And two, determine the amount of fines the town can ultimately enforce for the violations. The town can seek fines up to two hundred dollars per day from the notice of violation, but it is ultimately the court that will decide the amount of the daily fine. Fines imposed through this court proceeding become a lien against the property. Everyone should keep in mind, the court proceeding now pending is mechanisms for enforcement where people do not come into compliance themselves. That proceeding is what the town has to do to obtain a court order necessary granting it authority to take action. We do not know yet what exactly the town will be permitted to do in terms of enforcement. There is due process involved and we are subject to rule based time allowances for responses and the court's schedule, so it takes time. As of now, Mr. Bonging has entered an appearance and filed an answer expressing an intention to argue against the enforcement proceeding in court. We have an initial hearing scheduled with the judge for November twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen. I will know more after that. At this point, people could put in a notice of appearance so that they can get notices and filings in connection with this case. They should go to the website for the environmental court or just call the court to learn how to do that. I have not heard of an appeal from the garage slash department permit nor have I seen any paperwork related to that appeal. That permit was approved October fifth, twenty eighteen. Since an appeal was filed on March fourth, twenty nineteen, it would not be timely and likely is of no effect. I have not seen the appeal itself, so I am basing my response solely on the information I have from the email chain and the face of the permit. I am aware of the hazardous appeal from the June fourth, twenty eighteen application, which was timely, but that related to the school and it is all part of this pending environmental court matter. Merrill.
John?
Well, who will be responsible for the site? Will it be the town or the state or the court?
Last I knew, everybody when, uh, af- after the court will tell us what, what our next step is. It's from what, all the information I get from her, it's basically in the hands of the court and they'll direct us for the next, the next action.
Can you email that? That, uh?
Okay, any other old business?
I think it should be brought up. Uh, the, uh, Town Hall Committee of Such has, uh, contracted with Authentic Designs to, uh, create the lighting, which was the next project. And, uh, very similar to the models, their old ones that they found in the basement. And, uh, I forget what the total amount was.
It's in, it's in here.
It's in there, yeah. Um, and anyway, the Historical Society.
Three thousand fifty-two dollars and eighty cents.
That was the balance.
Oh, that was a balance?
The balance. This, the Historical Society in last year's appeal letter had designated part of that, results of that to supporting that. And so this was the balance. And there is some money left. Sue was talking to Julie today about it. Um, in the building fund could cover some of the installation. There is some deficit, still needs to be fundraised. Um, but it's moving along.
Excellent, that's great.
And you also may see, I haven't, I, this, today was the first day I saw that this public library applies and they, so that's what's progressing so far. That, I had that. Contacts with Mary Lou about it, nothing more than acknowledging that it's, they got it done. Um, there's no schedule for proposing it to us.
I'll read that over.
Yep.
That's really great that we were able to make a deal with Authentic Designs being local and stuff like that.
Yeah, and they were able to do it and, uh, come apparently fairly close to the, there's, I think, four chandelier types and then wall sconces. Um, many of them are similar, like at this Vermont State House, which were originally, I assume, gas lights. So they have that look. But there is upstairs, there is an old, a remnant of.
Remnant of, sound like work that worked from.
Yes.
That's really cool. Excellent, well, thank you for that, John. You got any old business? No. Do you seem to have any new business?
I do. Um, well, I guess it's maybe old business. Um, so there is a letter of interest submitted for the school board position. That was forwarded on to, um, myself to be talked about with you all tonight. They just wanted to let you know, um, an individual named Cory Rail, um, has been a college, college resident and married since two thousand and seven. And is interested in becoming involved. So they will be, she is, as of right now, according to Jackie Wilkins, who followed up with me on that, she is the only candidate as of now. So the candidate discussion might not be too lively at the next school board meeting, but they will be talking about it and ultimately, um, deciding on who will be going to the vacant spot for the duration of the term, which goes until March.
Okay, now, how did that work? They just want our support or?
Um, that was my same question. I think that they just, as Julie had mentioned at the last meeting, it's the way that everything is structured now, they, you are entitled to an opinion.
Okay.
Cool. Is the question, is it formal opinion or is it just a, a FYI?
You're, all I don't know. You're just entitled to an opinion. So whatever kind of opinion that may be, I do not know, but.
You don't know her, but I've heard the name. You don't know the person?
Um, her, the relevant experience includes having served on the BG forty-seven board for four years. Through those years as board chair, having served on the BRSC board for three years. And she's attended numerous seminars and webinars on education in Vermont and continues to keep up with education policies in our state. And she thinks that she hopes to be able to contribute to the thoughtful discussions about education for our community as a member of the county school board and as an audience member of several meetings of the current board. I'm truly impressed with how well everyone works together. Very positive and I think it's wonderful.
Thank you. Frank?
If it's a formal thing that you don't know, that you cover your bases, that you're taking a motion to support the school board's final decision on the candidate, you own the candidates submitted so far. You got to say a couple, and you can, on the record.
What, what did?
I asked her if it was meant to be passed along to all for information and feedback and she said, yes, please pass on to them. It looks like it won't be much of a discussion since we only have one candidate. So there's no request for a formal.
So, so we're good? Excellent, thank you.
I think we're good, yeah.
Then that's it for new business?
It sounds like the procedure changes, I think, the way they described. So that it'll be the school board that, from within the school board that extends, fills vacancies.
Public comment. Dolores, do you have anything to share with us tonight?
I guess happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving to you too.
About it.
John? Nothing? Okay.
Was Paul still alive there?
Yeah, keep it going, Frank.
The sewer plant.
Did you mow your lawn yet, Frank?
Yeah.
I think we should lobby the legislature to, lobby you go to that four or five day week plan to save a little bit of money.
How's it do with the design of the sewer plant? It doesn't have anything to do with anything other than the fact that we're putting it into a stream. So because we're, uh, direct discharge into a stream, then we can't do it on a, whether, whether we're discharging or not. It's because of the design of the facility.
Where if we discharge into a municipal mound system, we wouldn't have all that pot.
It, I have no idea. Alright, so, is that what we're looking at? Thank you all for coming tonight. Have a great evening.